Call the Village of Weston Board of Trustees we need to order. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nate, are you doing that on purpose? Okay. Roll call by clerk for Board of Trustees.
Ermeling.
Here.
Feeney.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
Jean.
Here.
White.
Here.
Ziegler.
Here.
Public comments at this point, is there any comments by the public? Dick? Just state your name and address for record.
Richard Barrett, Executive Director of the Wasow Center, Wisconsin Convention of Visitors Bureau, 219 Jefferson Street, Wasow, Wisconsin. First of all, I just want to take just a couple minutes. I just want to thank you for sticking with us and going through our times this year with the COVID and so on and so forth. But I want to thank you for that. Also, that offer an extension of help, that the way our contract states that we have some of those extra dollars in hold, if you want, we can progress here, which may be those available to you, so you have some extra dollars to work with. I want to let you know that we're here to work with everybody and try to do what's best for everybody. But I want to give you some good news for a change. I mean, we wear masks now and everything that we're doing. Tours and spending, I'm going to give you a sort of quick recap of 2019. Our communities, Central Wisconsin here, we were ranked number six in dollar growth over the whole state out of the 72 counties at $13.5 million. And that's competing against Milwaukee, Dane County, which is Madison, Waukesha, part of Milwaukee, Brown County with the Backers, and Walworth, which is basically Lake Geneva or right underneath them right now. We're ranked number two in growth, in percentage of growth, for the entire state of all 72 counties. We fell behind Pepin County, they only brought in $600,000, so the percentages for $600,000 was up 2% better than ours, but shows you that sometimes percentages don't mean a lot when we have $13.5 and we have $600,000. Our community's growth over the past 10 years, I've got to do some reports on this, we had a 213.4% growth from $1.26 million to $2.7 million in hotel revenues. Weston specifically had a 268% growth in those 10 years of hotel revenues. Our area has grown every year since 2010, we never had one down a year. So I'm really proud of that. Market share, this is some business for Weston and Rimon, over those 10 years, Weston was up 25% in growth, and our market share, and 70% from Rimon. Wasow's down 16.5, Rothschild down 15%, and Schofield's down 7.5. So in other words, people are using their hotels at a higher rate than some of the other locations in the community. Sports authority, just want everybody to know that we work with 58 nonprofit clubs and organizations within the Marathon County that produce our 120 events. The clubs and organizations' memberships are equivalent to 35.8% of the county's population. That's over 44,000, I think it is, of all the clubs that we help support. We work with 44 area businesses and use 27 different venues in areas for all these events. Going forward, I just informed today that things are looking brighter. Because we've been on the news quite a bit, but everything's looking a lot better with meetings starting to take place. At least that's what I've been told, as late as four o'clock this afternoon. I'm here to answer any questions of anything else that anybody might have had or heard or just still has questions about. If there's, I'm here to do it. I'll thank you, and I said I want to help if I possibly can. And I want to, you know, keep on saying thank you, but.
Okay. I think this is the only public comment?
Yep.
And there is no questions, so, but thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else in the public which should make a statement or talk? Anyone else on Zoom that would like to discuss, make a comment? Anyone from Zoom? Nate, you watching that? Okay. Hearing none, we're going to move forward. Or move on. And number four, minutes from previous meetings, 7/20/20, Board of Trustees.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermeling.
Second.
Second by Feeney on the question. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Number five, reports, minutes from boards, committees, and commissions. I don't see any.
There are none.
Right, okay. I'm going to adhere to the blue rule, and if I see it in blue, I will talk about it, so. Moving on to reports from departments, number 18 Administrator, Keith?
I had a very brief report this last week, as you know, it was pertaining with a family matter. Anyway, I guess I'm not the only one in the village though, unfortunately, I heard the news that Kim Krieger also passed away this last week.
I heard that.
We all, we all extend our condolences to his family, he's a longtime employee here, so, anyway, it's a sad thing. We have the vestibule open, the outer doors into the, to the south side of the building, with the interior ones locked. Sherry and her staff have been taking walk-in, in-person absentee voting. Within that area, it seems to be working out pretty well, and then they're also kind of trying to make sure we're reacting properly to the governor's order that was issued on the 31st, actually it took effect on the 1st of August, on the face covering requirement, if you will, I guess requirements in certain situations, as it's termed. So I guess we're trying to just make sure we're complying as we can. Our advice from our legal counsel is that really we need to comply with the CDC guidelines, and this governor's order is really more of an individual, placing the responsibility on an individual, so I think we have been practicing things pretty well in line with CDC, but I guess we'll take another look at that yet the next day or two. Make sure that we are keeping everybody comfortable and feeling like we are doing what we can to protect everybody. We're going to talk later about the parks, or should say Aquatic Center. Attendance has been down, as we've talked about, so just want to make sure we're all on the same page in terms of where we are financially, or where we might want to be financially. On Wednesday, we're going to be talking about our public relations that we want to do on our municipal facility, and we'll set the invitation to trustee Maloney, or President Maloney. We'll be mainly talking to staff about that, doing outline, but if you have thoughts on that, any other trustees, I guess, be welcome, it was by email. And I guess that would be the only highlights in addition to what I had, which wasn't a whole lot, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Keith? Yi, do you have any questions for Keith?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda. Let's see, any requests to pull items out? I think there's only one item out.
I just have a question.
Yes.
I know there was an explanation from our finance director about the numerous voids in.
Thank you for bringing that up. Jessica, are you on?
I am on.
Thank you. Trustee White has a question. It seems like for every bill, there's actually three lines for every bill.
Four, actually.
There's, it's actually a, well, it can only be three, because there has to be a charge.
One, two, three.
I thought it was only three for every bill.
There's one here where one employee is, is six times on the same invoice, it's like.
Yeah, it just, it seemed like there was a.
No.
It seemed like there was a charge, Jessica, then a credit, and then, and then another charge, and then it held. Was there an issue with all that this last period? Just a tremendous, a tremendous amount of voids.
My guess is a check sequence issue.
Okay, I thought maybe it was.
That's where I noticed it most, where you're scrolling right now.
Yeah, I thought maybe it was a classification issue, but you think it's just, I just think trustee White and others would just like us to kind of take a look at that to see, it was just confusing to, to watch, and, and then you had a really. Go ahead.
I'll follow up with you again tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any other questions before we go into approving the vouchers? Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ziegler.
Second.
Second by Feeney on the question. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, all so carried. Ordinances, number 30, ordinance number 20-010, and ordinance to amend sections 82.505, 82.506, and 82.57, all terrain vehicle and utility terrain vehicle routes in operation on highways within the Village of Weston. That's your pleasure. I think this is just a cleanup. Go ahead, trustee White?
In the ordinance that was, the actual ordinance is written out in the packet, on the first section one, I found, I believe it's a typo, where it starts out with section 82.505, 82, and it says section 52.507, which our village does not have.
Okay.
I'm assuming it's a typo, so if we approve this, I think, hopefully we'll get it printed correctly.
Okay.
See if you can see it, right there, 52.507.
Sherry, did you hear that? Nate, can you turn her up? Okay.
I'll, I'll give this to Mr. Donner.
Okay. Trustee White will furnish it to Keith Donner, okay, Sherry? Thank you.
No, there were, there were three different sections affected.
Okay. Okay.
But 52 is not.
Nate, can you move it forward, what page?
Pardon?
She said Nate, can you move it forward, what page?
See down here in the penalties. There's 82.507.
Oh. Nate, go up to section one.
Section one.
Right there, 82.507.
Yeah, but if you look under.
Under section one.
Yeah.
It says 52.
507.
Instead of 82.507.
Oh, oh, okay.
Right there.
Okay, I got it, I see it now.
That's a quick circle there, whoever did that. Good.
All right, that's all right.
All right, looking for action?
I'll move to approve the ordinance.
Move to approve by trustee Feeney?
I'll second with the provision, we make the correction.
Second by White with the provision corrected, the correction for whatever, 82 to 52, 52 to 82. On the question, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Nothing on a resolutions, new business, 2020 budget adjustment.
This was approved by the finance committee at the last meeting, we spread for them board meeting. The purpose of this budget adjustment is to allocate the funds to the appropriate accounts where the merit increase was approved in January.
Motion to approve the budget adjustments as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve by Ermeling, second by White. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Let's see, number 32, discussion and possible action on appointment to fill the recently vacated trustee seat. Last Friday, I believe, or Thursday, you received four, four, I believe, and then you, no, five, excuse me, five, and now today we received one more. I don't know if you have all had a chance to look those over?
I did not see today's.
Okay, today's was Fred Schuster.
Oh.
Yep, Fred Schuster.
I think that was received though by the deadline.
It wasn't received by the deadline, but today he did send one in, so, just so you know.
Thank you.
Yep, and it's, it's up to your pleasure, I'm not going to push this either way, but if you, I know we talked about bringing people in for interviews, but if someone is comfortable with what they've seen, or understand enough with the applications, we did put on here that we could have possible action too, on putting this new person on board.
This is trustee Jean, can I, can I just ask a point of clarification?
Sure.
Administrator Donner, did you men, when you said that the, I couldn't hear you well earlier, did you mention that the, the last application, or the application submitted today was not, was not on time, is that what you said?
No, it was, I wanted to, wanted to be clear that it was received by the deadline.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought you said it was not.
I thought, yeah, I did too.
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
I'm sorry.
It was, correct, Sherry, it was, it was received by the Sunday deadline.
Yes, I'm trustee Maloney.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thanks for the clarification.
So, Sherry, can you just list all applicants' names by name, please?
Let me get to that screen, so I can give you the correct names.
I know just the last names.
Just last names is fine.
Are you ready?
Last names is fine.
Okay, Steve Minell, Charlotte Towley, T-O-W-L-E, Steve Cronin, Shane King, so it's S-E-M-G-K-H-A-M-G, and then who, Shane Zgami, and Fred Schuster.
Thank you. Any, any nominations?
Well, I think if there's any discussion we may want to ask, if there's any questions, I appreciated the fact that there was a lot of information in the applications, and I, I felt it was a, a good way for us at least to get to know the candidates.
I agree. I will make a motion if nobody else will.
I, by the way, you can't.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we.
Can't.
Oh, it can't? Can't nominate?
Yeah, well, someone else, as chairman, or as the president presiding over this meeting, you aren't permitted to make motions, you can make seconds. In subcommittees, the president can make motions, as far as I understand, Robert's rules of order. So.
I can't nominate.
Cannot. Can't make motions.
I'm talking about nomination.
Nomination, okay.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Steve Minell to fill the seventh vacant seat.
I'd like to nominate Charlotte Towley.
Okay.
I'll nominate Fred Schuster.
Okay.
I'll second the Steve Minell nomination.
Okay. Need a second for Charlotte, or a second for Fred?
I'll second for Charlotte.
Okay. All right, just help me along here now, so.
Who was the second, second for Charlotte?
That was.
Trustee White.
Trustee White.
Thank you.
So let's move the first nomination, we have a first and a second, and do you want to, let's just do a vote, and if we don't get through tonight, then we bring in, we bring them in for interviews, and we'll go that route, so. All those in favor of Steve Minell filling the seventh seat, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I'm hearing.
Sorry, sorry, I could repeat the motion again, please.
Okay, all those in favor of nominating Steve Minell as the seventh trustee, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Nay, 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 okay. Motion, nominee defeated. Now let's move on to, go ahead.
Mister Chairman, maybe just play a clarification. I think your request for motion would be for, actually for appointment?
Yes.
Vote for appointment, not for nomination.
Oh, you're correct, you're correct, it is appointment, yep. Okay, so, if, if that was an appointment, it ain't going to change regardless if we move backwards. So now let's move to Nate's appointment for Charlotte, and trustee White's second. All those in favor say aye.
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 I want to be very clear here, Barb, I didn't hear nothing from you.
I didn't say anything.
Okay. So right, right now we have three. Okay. All those no would be a nay, nay?
Nay.
So there we are.
Three to three.
This is interesting.
Good.
All right, so, let's see, discussion pass action on appointment to fill, okay, so I think at this point, our next meeting, we would then bring them in for interviews, would everybody be comfortable with that? Okay?
If you want to do that at a regular meeting, or do you want to have a special meeting just for that purpose only?
I'd like it at a regular meeting. That's going to come up in this too.
Depends upon when we're going to have our next meeting.
Right.
If there's, I see in the, is a possible change in the meeting number.
Well, it's for all of us.
Right.
Yeah, I just, I just felt we should talk about it, so.
My, I guess, if hypothetically, we were to move the, move it to a monthly meeting.
Well, that's a different discussion, so, right, right now we're on.
Right, right.
Appointments, so we got to stay on that?
Yep.
So let's stay on appointments, so, all the appointments died, so let's move on to 33. Appointment, chairperson of the planning commission. I'm going to appoint myself as president, as the planning commission chair, and I, do I need a motion, or do I need a first and a second on that? I don't believe so.
Generally, generally what happens, Mister Chairman, is it's presented to the body of the.
Right.
And they approve your appointments and/or disapprove them, depending upon.
We still have to fill a void, but I think in past, heard from Barb, that the president has served in that capacity.
I was the only one that chose not to at one point, because.
Oh, you did? I thought you always were.
The first time I did not, the second time I did.
Yeah, I thought you did too.
And I was on the plan commission.
Okay, so if, if I have to make an appointment, am I looking for a second then on that, or am I just appointing that?
On the plan commission statute, you're not, you have the authority of the.
That's what I, that's what I thought, okay.
To make the appointment.
All right, thank you.
The power of approval of the rest of the board.
Trust me, I'm, I'm going to get better, so trust me, with all of your help. So, okay, so that's done, so 34. Appoint the trustee to Safer Board of Directors. I want to ask a question on this, as long as we're here, I want to know who is interested.
I am.
Anyone else interested?
I would be.
Okay.
I don't know why.
Are you?
Sure.
Sure.
Everybody is? Yi, are you interested?
I am not interested.
Okay. All right, thank you, Yi, a little, little humor. Okay, so looking for an appointment. I'm going to move to appoint trustee White.
I'll second that.
Second by Barb. On that appointment, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay, or, why can't I get that second line? All those in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed, I couldn't get the opposed, sorry. All those opposed? So carried. Safer we did first, I asked that the open planning be left off, because we have a, that can take some time, and plus we don't know who's going to get to the seventh seat, and the EMPD won't have a meeting for a while, so if, if nobody minds, I wouldn't mind holding it off, but can we do EMPD? Or since it's not on here, we can't?
No, we don't have it on the agenda.
Okay, so that'll go on to the next one. But now we won't have someone on there, so we're going to do this with this body anyway for EMPD. Okay. 35, discussion and possible action on Board of Trustees and committee meeting schedule changes. I asked, I had a little meeting last week with trust administrator Donner, and I just want everyone to think, we don't have to decide this tonight, but how many times, you know, I am the one that came on this board two and a half years ago, and I pushed for two BOT meetings a month. I just, in my mind, that's what I used to do when, when I was back on the board five, six, seven years ago, and I thought it was the right thing to do, but listening to staff, and I think sometimes a few conversations with you, with the trustees also, we're going to have some big meetings, and we're going to have some smaller ones, like tonight, and if I am more quiet, it'll stay short tonight. But right now, the staff is just ramping up and ramping down, ramping up, ramping down, and it just seems like they're just going from meeting to meeting to meeting. And to keep staff productive, and if we can, you know, keep the planning and keep the ordinance, I mean, all the things approved that need to be approved, I just want us all to think about going back to one meeting a month. All the committee and all the commission meetings are once a month. I also would like everyone to think about, I think right now we're keeping the fourth and possible fifth week free, I don't think there's anything in there. I actually wonder if, if the BOT meeting would be, go back to the third, which it was, can we somehow keep the first week free too? I think, I think not only should we be looking at that, but we should be looking at tightening it up and getting a higher sense of productivity on our meetings, and not just have them all scattered all over the place because we can't figure out another way to do it, but if staff could get it so that we're on, you know, like Mondays and Tuesdays, on the second and third weeks of every month, I think that might be doable. So I, I'd like to hear other discussion on that, and I'm just one opinion, I'm just a trustee with a few signing abilities. Trustee White?
This was done in the past, and I can see, we had some feedback from our customers that sometimes it took an inordinate amount of time to get their plans through, or action taken on an item, it would take only once a month, and that was the only negative I heard when we were holding one a month. And the other thing is, I think we're going to have to find out from our committee members if we're going to change when they meet, so that we don't wind up short, shutting somebody out of the meeting, because all of a sudden now it's on a date that they can't attend. And that's my only comment.
Keith?
So just, I think, a response on that, I guess, we want to call it the concerns about reaction time, if you will, or time, I think that, that was related to plan commission items, and I think there's been some changes made in plan commission processes where a lot of items that used to come to plan commission and then subsequently came to the board no longer, was it no longer required to come to the board? A lot of, like site plan approvals, for instance, unless there's some unique situation that may have to come to the board. But I think to wind those things up properly, I think the thought was that plan commission meets on the second Monday of every month, so the desire would be then, if we were going to have one board meeting, we would have that board meeting on the third Monday.
So they could take action on anything that the plan commission.
Right.
Well, I'm just, I just have to ask a question on what you just said with your comments of that we were lacking. If we were, and I wasn't on the board, why didn't we go to two times a month? Because we went to two times a month when I got on this board two years ago.
It's, it's.
And I was off for six or seven years, so if that was some, some issues, why didn't we then switch?
We were two times a month.
No, once.
No, we do.
Two.
When I got on the board in 18, it was once a month. Board of trustee was once a month, and, and I, I don't, I'm trying really hard not to bring up Wally's name again, but Wally and I pushed for two times a month, and, and it went, but you, the previous board was one time a month. And I, because, because it was 450 pages of documents.
Well, that can still happen.
And it can, but you know what? I'm up to speed now. So, so now I can handle it, or I can talk to trustee White, and he'll help me.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, just now when you came back on.
In 18, right.
Yeah, okay.
Because prior to that, now, now way back when it was two, but then it streamlined with our previous administrator, and he was probably right. He was probably right, it should be one. And I, I think we're taxing the staff too hard, and, so just think about it, we don't have to decide that tonight.
Well, I guess then the other thought is, if there is something that is going on that.
Special meeting, sure.
You can do a special meeting.
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, to me, that makes more sense than not meeting twice a month, and having almost a meeting just because we're going to have a meeting.
Exactly.
Rather than having a night that we could meet and actually conduct some business.
Another thing I brought up was, and I know we've gone through a couple months of COVID here, but the cancellations, there is a lot of cancellations, and I think there's a lot of cancellations regardless with meetings, because there's nothing there. And I think we need to take a really close look at not eliminating, like we did public safety, but possibly going to six times a year. If, I mean, what, or if you just want to cancel every time, you know, it just, to me, I, when I see that cancel, it just looks, it just looks different to me, I just wonder I, I just wonder if we could build up more business or more stuff to talk about every two months versus that. That's for the committees. Now, I would propose that the staff, and, and with any help from any trustee, if they wanna talk too. But if the staff would look at this and try to figure out the schedules. And trustee White and trustee Ermeling both brought up other people's schedules and different timeframes. But if it could work, let's see if it could work. And streamline it a little bit, and I think it'd make a lot of sense. We're, we're not shying away from any of our duties or any of our work.
Right.
Because, trust me, it'll all be there. It's all gonna be there. In fact, like, like Barb, you said is we might have a special meeting, so.
Right. Cuz I know there's been different times that, that in the past years that some, we met.
Yep.
Just because we were supposed to meet, but I don't necessarily need to have a meeting just to have a meeting. I want, I want something there that I'm gonna deal with, so.
So I understand that Director Higgins has her hand up to be recognized to speak.
Yep, somewhere. Jen? Go ahead, Jen.
Oh, I was just gonna say, it really wasn't an issue with Plan Commission back then just because we actually had it set up so that everything went to the board right after. My concern would be if you chose to do it the meeting before.
Right.
They would have to wait for things.
Right. And that's what Lauren said too. We'd have planning on the second and then BOT on the, on the third. And it would make perfect sense to follow up on each other.
Yeah.
I think you.
That would be my only concern if you chose a different time. Otherwise, it should be fine.
Mr. President, if I could just make a remark here.
Absolutely.
I guess, I guess, I was just kinda, you know, trying to think here. And I definitely agree with the, the fact that in the past, when the meetings were just once a month, the packets were extremely long. But you know, I know that just to kind of solve what trustee White also mentioned, the fact that there's some businesses who wants their permits passed, you know, or you know, they needed something passed right away. And I guess I was just kinda seeing, you know, just throwing a suggestion out there. Maybe we could do something along the lines of what the County Board does. You know, they have two meetings, but one is an educational meeting, and then the other one's a voting meeting.
We tried that too.
And what could happen is that on the Saturday, on the educational meeting, between that time period until the voting meeting, if there's any urgent items that needed to be added additional to the agenda, they could be added in as well too. I think Lauren and also I think Barb, I think you two are also familiar with that as well. And I guess, and if I recall, Mark, you're also familiar with that as well. So just, just a suggestion and just throwing that out there.
All right. Good point, Yi. Thank you. Another thought, just real quick, then go to trustee White. Another thought would be if the planning is so busy in the summer months that we could do three or four months of double meetings and then revert back to eight months of singles. Trustee White?
I know when we used to have the, the two meetings, there was a lot of, there was some confusion as far as which meeting did someone have to attend. And we also had an early session before one of the meetings, which was called a Committee of the Whole, which was also confusing to the public. Didn't realize that they, there was discussion taking place before the action. It was, if you recall, the County Board, there was, we had the educational meeting where everything was discussed, questions asked. Action was taken at the next meeting. But this was at the same meeting. But a lot of people didn't realize that there was a lot of discussion going on before the, at, at the end of the meeting of the Committee of the Whole and the beginning of the Board of Trustees. So that was confusing to some of our customers that didn't quite understand the concept.
Yeah, and I would not be in favor of going back to the educational one and then have the meeting on the other. That, it didn't work well, that for our board the last time. And I would not be in favor of moving back to that. If we're gonna go to one meeting a month, let's go to one meeting a month. And if we have to call a special meeting, let's call a special meeting. Very simple.
I'd like to make a motion that.
We, we don't have to. We don't have to make a motion. I, I actually kinda, this is just my thought, and you can certainly make that motion. Do I have to let him make a motion?
Well, it says discussion and possible action, so if he wants to make a motion.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that the village move to, to the, or to set a new meeting date of the first Monday of the month at.
Third, 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 third.
Oh, third Monday, sorry. My bad. Third Monday of the month effective in September. Actually, no, I'm sorry, effective August the seventeenth. So that we can discuss the additional trustee.
Okay. That's a motion as Nate stated. Do I hear a second?
I'll make a second, but I guess I'm not.
On a discussion? Go ahead.
Okay, on the discussion. So you're saying that we still will meet on the seventeenth?
Right.
Okay, cuz that's what I was gonna say, I think would be important for.
The seventeen would be the third.
Right.
Right? Okay, then, then, then on it would be the third.
It would be the third Monday of each month.
Yep. Okay, and I'm fine with that. My only thought was just to get it started tonight and then have it go to staff and have them put together some models. But we could, we could go through with this right now, and then staff, if you don't mind, in two weeks.
Sure.
Putting together some schedules and just maybe showing that on seventeen.
Yeah, then we can approve or.
Right. If we wanna move some other stuff around. Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
I think the other implication though is that we'll probably have to make some tweaks in the ordinance language because I'm pretty sure the ordinance right now says the board meets twice a month.
Okay.
Yep.
So we'll just have to make sure those.
It stays first and third Monday, so we're gonna have to change the ordinance.
Okay.
So we can bring that up on the seventeenth.
Yep. Are we good? All right. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I, I just, yeah, I think we should make clear that this is just the Board of Trustees, not any of the committees.
Yes. Board of Trustees only, going to once a month, going back to once a month. And it'll be on the third Monday of the month, still at 6:00 PM. And we'll eliminate the first. And we'll have to do some critiquing as we go. With all that being said, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Yi, did you hear all that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move to postpone the committee meeting schedules until appropriate time that we have had more chance to study the schedule for other committees and commissions.
Oh, sure. Also, the committee side. Yes, okay. I'll, anyone want to second that?
I'll second.
Second it by, motion by White, second by Ermeling on the discussion. Yi, if you didn't hear that, he's just motioning to postpone the committee meeting schedule changes?
Yeah, I did hear.
Until staff? Okay, thank you. On the discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thirty-six. Discussion and possible action on Aquatic Center operation for current season. Keith, you have that? Or Sean?
Yeah, between myself and Jessica.
Okay, Sean.
Michael, I don't know if you have access, or who's running, what is the screen?
Nate does.
Nate does.
So in the packet, there was an added, an updated spreadsheet or two on the Aquatic Center here. That updates what was in the packet. In the P drive, yes, I'm sorry. So what you, what was in the packet was best, our best estimate of where the Aquatic Center was heading based on information we had as of Friday. Jenna and Jessica updated this now today. It looks slightly different. I think the other thing was that we had the original projections on budget from our decision earlier this year to open. And that was, that decision was made irrespective of really knowing how things were gonna work. There should be a secondary folder in today's meeting packet folder in there?
Yeah, there's some, I'll, is that right?
Yeah. Is that what you're in?
Yeah.
Should just be an Excel spreadsheet or two.
That is an Excel spreadsheet.
There you go. Okay, that's a room tax projection. There's two assumptions made. I don't know, Jessica, you might be better to able to walk through this one if you want.
Sure. This is the one with our room tax projections. The ones in white are the ones we've actually received. And then the ones in yellow are all estimated. And the screen that we're on now, it estimates, as you can see below, thirty-three percent of the two-year average for fourth quarter and third quarter. For the one else. I guess the number that we might focus on is to look at the right, the amount that the village can actually keep. So at this time, with reduced third quarter and fourth quarter projections, the village can look at keeping eighty-one thousand, seven, eighteen. Our budget was a hundred and twenty-three.
So that number that you're, that number you're mentioning though is, is the village's thirty percent share of room tax, correct?
Yes. Yep, that's the money that the village will get to keep and we can use it as we desire, which is normally CIP and pool. This year, when it was discussed on opening the Aquatic Center, the agreement that presents this was we'll look to see what room tax is and hopefully recover the deficit. So right now, we're looking at eighty-one thousand. So above and beyond the full budgeted pool is forty-one thousand that we could put towards the pool.
And let's take a.
You had a more, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
You had a more optimistic projection on room tax collection. This one, this one is based on the collections being similar in quarters three and four as it is to quarter two, right?
Yeah, Nate, if you took a normal two, three, and two, four, that will, we'll be able to look at what happens in two, three, and two, four, you know, we would have taken what, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And that's only twelve thousand dollars in the budget.
Okay.
The likelihood of this scenario happening is not very good. But at this point, these are the two scenarios that we decided to put forward.
Confusing.
All right, so we're doing this maybe a little bit backwards. So Nate, the other spreadsheet in here, in this folder, should have the operating budget for the pool, the Aquatic Center. There should have been two workbooks in that same folder.
Director.
One is twenty-twenty pool estimate, updated two thousand eight oh three. There it is.
So bottom line, Director Troutman, at this point in time, how much of a deficit are we running?
That's what this.
It's an expert.
That's what this spreadsheet will show, should give us some. There, okay. Now zoom in.
Okay, so as you can see, it's for an estimated line that first closed. We assume the full forty thousand dollars of room tax is gonna go towards it. And then we would have a, a very small deficit. I can't see the button. There you go. A six thousand and seventy-five dollars loss. Now, you can see above that line is estimated COVID claimable cost. We plan on applying to the rotary recovery grant to cover any COVID expenses that would be eligible for the grant.
Okay.
So that's our estimates as of right now.
So holding it open till August, what, twenty-third or twenty-six would be twenty-three thousand net loss?
Twenty-three thousand dollars.
Net loss, okay. Help me with another thing I read in there, where we went to two shifts a day. Have we extended the length or just shut the, the last one off?
We decided to just turn, shut the last one off because they weren't getting any attendance at all. Now that just would have gone into effect today, but they were closed Sunday, today. And I guess they're probably tomorrow because of the weather.
Okay.
It's gonna be too cold.
Yeah.
Too cool.
The one comment I, go ahead, trustee Ermeling.
Well, I guess my, my question is more, how much of that, that forty thousand, you said the full forty thousand? How much of that would have been the CIP? Or was that all pool?
So the forty thousand is what's budgeted there. So anything above and beyond the forty thousand is what we would have put to CIP.
Okay.
Okay, so now, I guess I am having a problem with taking money out of CIP, then we gotta borrow more. But that's, is there a way, if we fall that short of room tax, can we go to, you have excess funds from us that you're holding. Could we tap into that to cover that loss?
The excess funds in the room tax are earmarked for the signage.
No, 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 I'm talking.
Barb, Barb was motioning to Dick Barrett. He's in the room.
To Dick Barrett. I'm sorry, you can't see me. I'm sorry. But yeah, Mr. Barrett, I was asking.
The CDB funds. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just asking if, if we had a shortfall without taking away from the CIP, allowing them to take what is there budgeted. That shortfall, then could we go to that organization that's holding excess funds of Weston for whatever? If we could tap into that to cover the shortfall? And Mr. Barrett, I believe you're kinda nodding your head yes.
Okay.
Because I, I just, this is, you know, well, I, I was concerned with where the loss was going to be, where we were gonna find the money to cover this loss. And I guess, to me, it makes more sense than to be knocking out other programs that are in the budget and cutting them short. I, I just.
And I'm sure Sean could relay more on some of the concerns. But the only concern I'm hearing is that they can't leave their kids there longer. They used to be able to leave them there all day, and now it's two and a half hours, then clean, then two and a half hours clean, two and a half hours clean.
Right.
I, I wonder if we, since we're not hitting capacity, could we change a few things up and let, let them stay? But they gotta get out of the water to clean. You know, so I, I'm just wondering. So, and that's just an opinion of mine. Lauren, do you have another one?
Sure. I, I think if we're, if we're gonna lose, I mean, it's really unfortunate. I think my opinion is that rather than bleed more money, we might as well just shut it down as long as we can safely do it. But assure the public, it's not for health reasons, it's strictly a financial decision. But that's my opinion.
And I concur. I also want to be fair to, to the customers and to our food vendors. So I think if we give them, you know, two weeks, or maybe Sunday, the twenty-third, so they get that, so they get an opportunity on the seventeenth to come and talk to the board if they're willing to accept.
Well, is it, are, are we closing?
We're closing August twenty-third anyway.
Twenty-third would have gone yesterday.
I was just gonna say, we're closing by then, so what?
I must have, I must have misread it. My apologies.
That's all right.
Nate, Nate is correct. I got a phone call, and I believe he did too, from our food provider out there. And he is very concerned that if we shut this down quickly, he would have no outlet for the food that he's already purchased. So I, can we at least talk to him and then collective, do we have to have an action here to close it early? Or can we just close it early?
I think it was, it's really quite, I, it's a question of how much the board, I guess, is willing to lose. I think Jessica is saying that we would have the capacity with our room tax collections if we divert them to the, to the pool operation to plug the hole. That a lot of that thirty percent share that we retain would be, could be allocated here. Now, I guess, whether that's the right thing to do or not, or we ask for some other of our, of our twenty-five percent back that CDB is holding, that's another option. We also could talk to the YMCA. There is a line in the contract that said if we had a shorter season, that they would look at or consider, we can discuss reducing their management fee, which was supposed to be thirty-five thousand dollars for four months this year. And we're essentially gonna be three months because, consider about a month of preparation and hiring. And then, you know, we were gonna, they're gonna be open three months essentially for operation. Well, we're only gonna end up with two months essentially in the end. So we needed to take a look at that. So, you know, the, the loss, you're gonna lose money either way, or any, no matter what we do. So I guess it would be a matter of gonna have Sean talk with the food vendor and see what his, or what their commitments are. But I guess in terms of the board taking action, it's not something we were necessarily expecting tonight. Maybe just get a little feedback and understand.
Well, and I do have one more comment. The reservation side, I'm sorry, you did? Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Oh. The, the one thing that I also kinda watched was the traceability aspect. And I, I know that's what we're talking about when we say reservations and credit cards. But who decided about the traceability? Are we tracing people in and out of here? Are bars tracing people in and out of their bars, their restaurants, their gas stations, their C stores, their grocery stores? No. Did you have something to say, Lauren?
No, I.
I just saw the eye roll, so I just wondered.
Part of it is, is the mass gathering. I think if we ever, if we had a COVID outbreak at the pool, and we don't know who was there, it's a.
Same thing with the grocery store.
I, I believe.
Pick and Save has got a full parking lot every day.
Yes.
Weekends is even more. Probably five hundred people. Target, same thing. Walmart has probably got fifteen hundred people. I'm just saying, we put, we put some undue restrictions on these patrons. And I think some of these, some of these deals definitely got us a lower amount of people coming in. Obviously, equals less revenue.
Probably, because first of all, like you mentioned, they, they can't drop their kids off and leave them there all day long.
Yeah, we can't comment about that because we've been doing it for twenty years.
True.
So now all of a sudden, it's an issue. Well, it ain't an issue cuz we've been doing it for twenty years. So we've allowed them up to eight years old, and then we'll babysit them for nine hours.
Yeah.
So that, that can't be an issue right now. I'm saying the restrictions we put on this pool this year was the traceability, the, the credit cards, no cash. People are showing up that think they can go with cash, and they can't cuz they have to do the reservation.
That was a concern I had.
And it is. It's a big deal. Cuz we. And it is, it's a big deal because we've never done this before, but we try to do the right thing and I get that, I supported it. I'm just saying, for the last couple of weeks, if we're gonna, you know, talk to our food vendor and talk to some others, do we open it up a little bit? I mean, we're not, we're not tracing anything anywhere else. Who's tracing?
If, if I come in with cash, can't I?
You can't come in.
I know, but I'm saying if, if I, if there is reservations, people have made reservations and there's twenty-five spots open yet.
Oh, there's a hundred spots open.
Well, I know, but I'm just using twenty-five spots that are still open yet, why can't we accept if somebody walks up and can't we take their name at that time?
Well, I know, but why take the name? Why are we, why are we imposing and mandating that there when there's no traceability anywhere else?
Well, just, I, just, I'm not even gonna argue about whether we want, if, if we wanna trace them because of whatever, that's fine, but why can't we, if I come up with cash, why can't I just give you my name and tell you who I am? And have you the cash?
Not the candle cash.
Right.
There were some concerns that the YMCA had as we were talking about our management agreement, but they wanted to, they wanted to make sure that this was a successful operation, that we were, that we were doing everything we could to, to protect or to put in safeguards to minimize any chance of exposure, so.
Okay.
That was part of it, so I don't know, Nate, if you have other insight on that from Sean?
I, I was gonna add that, um, I guess when I found that it ever happened, there weren't many people that came in looking just to come in that day, like the first week there was, in the first week there were a lot and you were excited about. But they were, most of those people, they went, they knew they had their cars on their phones and just took care of the parking lot.
Oh, I see. I, I, I don't mean to be a backseat and I'm, I'm certainly not trying to sound like it, I was one hundred and ten percent behind this whole thing. I'm, I'm just saying, you know, change is maybe okay the last couple of weeks, but if this, I, I think we just have to take in consideration the food vendor and whatever this board wants to do is, I will support.
Okay, can I ask? And you might, you might have, Jessica, you might have told us and I, I missed it. But if we stay open till the actual closing now, mind you, I was never for this to begin with. What anticipated loss for the, just the two weeks are we looking at? Or, or till the end, whatever that amount would be.
You asking Jessica, right?
Yeah.
Jessica, did you hear that?
Yeah, isn't it on the screen?
I was gonna say it's probably here.
Is it the twenty-two thousand number or the twenty?
Is that for three weeks or is that what we anticipate for the whole time?
I thought that was building up.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, it's gonna be depend on what we negotiate with the YMCA in the last few days.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm just kind of curious, what, what additional, how much of more of a loss are we gonna take if we close it right now versus closing it in three weeks? Are we talking a lot of money and I guess?
Looks like seventeen thousand.
Isn't it like eighteen thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what Lauren just said.
Okay. I was looking at all those numbers trying to scan.
The six thousand subtract from twenty-three is roughly.
Okay, okay, I see where you're, you're, okay.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That it's, but it's gonna cost us for three weeks, eighteen thousand?
Oh, we got wages in there and.
The biggest cost is wages.
Right.
But I guess I still would be in favor of if we're going to leave this open and I guess, um, I don't wanna be taking from other parts of our budget, which includes CIP, to fund the loss to the pool if we can go to, um, the, the, the organization, completely slipped my mind here. But Mr. Barrett, if we can go to them, CBC, and make up because that loss through our funds there, I mean, to me, if we start taking more and more away from our budget trying to keep this pool open, um, we're gonna have enough shortfalls coming that we don't need anymore.
Maybe we have a staff has a talk or Sean has a talk with, uh, our food provider out there and instead of losing, as Lauren said, about eighteen thousand dollars in the next couple of weeks, maybe two or three grand will help him out and then we just save fifteen thousand dollars. Lauren?
Well, I, I think also if we're gonna do that, I think we owe something to the staff that is there working. All of a sudden they're three weeks short on their payroll. So if we're gonna try to make one person whole, everyone should be tried, or at least compensated someplace for their loss. Because to favor one over the other, I don't think it's a.
No, it's a good point, that's a very good point.
Plus it builds loyalty with people that wanna come back and work. If we treat people fairly, they're gonna come, wanna come back and work.
Well said.
Completely agree.
Okay, now what's that gonna run, because now we won't have any income.
Well, no. You know, you, you don't see smiles with these masks on, so. Because I think Lauren was smiling.
The thing we don't know.
The wrinkles here.
The thing we don't know is, because these two sessions would be longer than we, than each of the three, each of the sessions where we were having three, whether that would have made, would have made any difference, we don't know. So.
What does, um, and I know Sean's not here and I know you kind, both of you are speaking for him, what does he think? Does he have any opinion to this?
He just wanted to make sure that we were, the board and we had all discussed what the situation was and be mindful of what's happening there. I think we have, we have some options that probably are not that desirable perhaps and plug in that hole, but I, we do need to follow up, get some more detail. I, I think if we had to make a decision on this and felt it was prudent to do that, we probably wanna have a special meeting of the board to, to talk about that.
Well, Mr. Barrett, how, how many dollars do we have that's available at this time? And would it plug the hole if we stayed open for the remainder?
What I would say is take that twenty-five percent, that's what's in the middle there, and take that for the next three quarters, you know, that you got coming up, starting with the second quarter right now. And if you need something to finish before the end of the year, just let me know, because yes, there's a, I, my last recollection was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there.
Hundred and fifteen or hundred and fifty?
One five zero.
Okay.
So we can make it whole.
You know, because I'm worried about, there, it, it isn't just this pool, it is a lot of things out there
I agree.
that we're gonna be short and I, I just can't see taking money from one spot to plug the holes to the pool. I just go, wait a minute.
This is an ordinary time, so we all have to work together. I mean, we're having a hard time just being live.
Yep.
So.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, your thoughts, which, which we've just talked about for twenty minutes?
I guess if there was a way at this point in time that we could save some money by closing up without, but we gotta work with the vendor and, and, but I.
You know what's gonna happen, we're gonna, we're gonna give a deadline and then we're gonna have ninety-two degree weather
Yeah.
for the last three weeks of August.
Which we normally do.
Yeah, I, in fact, I just checked my phone to see what next week is.
It's coming up.
It's over eighty degrees, you know, for every day.
Maybe we can adjust the hours, maybe we can tweak it or do something.
They shortened it a little bit, but it made it two longer segments instead of three shorter ones, right?
Right.
So that might enhance some of it too, so.
May have matched the, I think the Saturday or the Sunday sessions, which I think.
And if you don't wanna touch the money, just have a big jar there and have them trying to put in some and can take it to the bank, have them touch it. So what's, what's your pleasure or you wanna? And I know you said that this was for our discussion.
Really, right?
But it, it does have a possible action.
Well, if, if we take no action, it stays open until it's readily scheduled.
Okay.
Time.
Is that what everybody's thinking?
I, I'm not gonna make a motion.
Okay, so, but taking no action then means we're gonna move it to the seventeenth? Or to, or to a special meeting?
No, it just means that it'll go on the way it was unless we decide.
Make a different decision.
Yes, okay, good. Anyone else? Nope. John?
I mean, you could bring it back to the seventeenth, but by then it's just tomorrow.
I'll work.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, thirty-six done, let's see, uh, we're gonna be moving to a closed session. Roll call vote.
I make a motion too.
Yep, make a motion, I'm sorry.
One second.
No, we gotta read.
You gotta read the motion.
Yeah, I'm gonna read, oh, I thought it was after the first and second.
No, you gotta read the motion to go into it.
Uh, motion to close session for nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent E, delivering or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Offer by Tommy Docs to purchase land in Weston Business Park and number two, Wausau slash Central Wisconsin Convention and Visitors Bureau Agreement. Looking for a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Ermeling, second by Feeney, roll call vote.
Mr. President, I just wanna make a, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, if I, I guess if I want, uh, now obviously I am okay with us going to closed session for the offer by Tommy Docs, but I want us to discuss the Wausau Central Wisconsin Convention and Visitors Bureau meeting. So, so would I vote against this, like, is that, is that how it would work, or we, can I make an amendment, just going to closed session, uh, discussing the, uh, uh, offer by Tommy Docs versus that?
I think you would probably have, would be make two motions, so that one you can defeat and the other you can approve.
Okay.
And then you can make a motion to have the other discussion in open, if you wish.
Okay.
Okay, so then what you read, you would then put it, um.
Per Tommy Docs only?
Tommy Docs.
Per Tommy Docs only. Okay, so motion, motioned and seconded on the offer by Tommy Docs to purchase land in Weston Business Park, right?
There was already a motion made on the complete.
On, on everything.
On both things, so.
Okay, I, I.
I'll rescind my second.
I rescind my motion.
Okay.
There you go, now you can make the motion again with, it's called.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to go into closed session. Do I gotta read that whole thing again?
Well.
You don't have to.
You can always say ibn.
Ibn, ibn, uh, for offer by Tommy Docs to purchase land in Weston Business Park.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor say aye.
Roll call.
A roll call, excuse me? And then we're gonna come auto roll call for the other, the other piece?
Yes, you can.
Or do we do that piece first?
No, I think you can do, you don't have to, if your motion is just to cover that one issue, you're fine.
Okay. Roll call. Sherry?
Aye.
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 Sean?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
In closed session? Session, uh, second part of the closed session item is the Wausau Central Wisconsin Convention and Visitors Bureau Agreement. Motion?
I move to enter a closed session to discuss that item.
We have a motion by Feeney.
Second.
Second by Ziegler on the question.
I'll answer roll call.
Hearing none, a roll call vote. Sherry? Did we lose Sherry?
Sherry, you're there.
Sherry, you there?
I don't see Sherry on the participation.
She's still there, she's having issues with her.
Okay. Nate, can you call roll call or is it clerk captain? Clerk's got to call. Well, she could sneak in here quick too. She thought it'd be busier.
She can't get unmuted, but she's in here.
Right, Keith is coming to get her.
She's here with me.
I know.
Okay.
We should really have popcorn.
Where's he? Here and who is me?
Yeah, Jen, Jen in her office.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Are you, are you masked up and social distancing? That office is actually quite small.
Jen, just bring some popcorn next time.
Take account difficulties, I guess.
Okay. You there, Sherry?
Oh.
Sherry? Sherry, you there? You there? We, we're going back into closed session, we need a roll call, please?
Aye.
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 No. White?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Didn't sound like that. All right, we are officially in closed session.
Okay.
Okay. Coming back from closed session, we're in open session. Possible action on closed session items, we have nothing to report in closed session. Remarks from trustees? Nate?
Nope.
John?
Nope.
Barb? Lauren?
I just have one comment that I, I mentioned it to some of the other, that, uh, we received the mail for a request for an absentee ballot in the, our mail for my father-in-law, who's been dead for seven years already. I thought if other people are receiving this, this may be adding to the confusion as far as, and that's why it's important for you always, if you get calls from people, tell them, call your municipal clerk, get ahold of them, they are the definitive source for information. This, you know, if I didn't know better, I would say, wow. And it's by one of the political parties.
Well.
Can I ask something to that?
Go ahead, Sherry.
Just that, yeah, so, uh, these parties send out the, these mailers and they make it look like it's coming from my office.
Yes.
They don't think it's coming from us and it's not.
Yep.
So they're getting upset because they've already registered or they've already got their ballot and now they're getting this information from a third party and so they're calling us saying, why are you sending me this stuff again? And I called the state and in fact, if we tell them, ask them not to put our return address on there and the state said no.
Okay. Well, there was one this weekend that Nate and Sherry helped out some.
It says right on the return envelope.
Yeah. Exactly. Okay, um, is that it, Lauren? Good?
That's it.
I just have a couple of things here. Moving forward, um, I had, uh, thought about a seating chart, but there is gonna be no seating chart, you wanna sit wherever you want. I'll, I'll sit here and, uh, uh, Lauren would like to sit on that side of, of the wall, but you wanna move around, move around. Second thing is, uh, on the next agenda then, I, I didn't know what was gonna happen tonight, so, um, we're gonna put EMPD, uh, uh, joint finance on there and we're also gonna put, uh, vice chairman on there too, so that'll both be on the next meeting.